Yeah, shall we get started? Let's call meeting to order. We have a full board tonight, complete quorum. I don't see anybody from the public for a public comment. So the first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for August 15th. And I see that Mitch made the change to Andy Saylor's name that Jen flagged. Are there any other changes to the minutes? We get a motion to approve. Second. Sylvia moved. Sam second. All those in favor?
I.
Minutes are approved. Library game. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll abstain just because I wasn't here last week.
Okay, because you weren't here. David, your update.
Well, that fast.
I'm like, you're up.
Everything is good. We're still moving quite quickly. So we did. We did have a series of reader handbook back from employers council a couple of weeks ago. Jen and I basically rewrote it and then we circulated it among a number of readers, including Sam and Jen. We've incorporated all that feedback and now it's back in the hands of employers council for legal review. It'll come back. We probably still have some minor changes to make, but I think it's in pretty good shape. The I T R F P went out last week and we've had some good response. So I think we've, we're only reaching out to eight firms, nine, I guess. All but one responded. And so, and we're in conversations with the, and questions are coming in. So in droves, like they're the first one that we opened up, I think, had like, I made it through about 30 or 40 questions and stopped, but there's a lot of questions. Obviously, that we knew that when we sent out the RFP, there was some ambiguity. Some of the firms we speak spoken to have clearly wrapped their head around the ambiguity and understand that they're proposing in ranges. And those conversations have been extraordinarily productive. There's at least one firm that is still kind of, I think, hoping that all of the things that we don't know, we're able to just tell them what the answers are. We don't know the answers. And so that's why they got in the RFP. And I think we were very upfront about that when we solicited their bid. So those parts, I think those firms are still contemplating whether it's worth the time and energy to bid on it. But I expect everything there is on time. And so far, what we're hearing back from all the firms is the, the artificial timeline we've set is certainly different. A lot of the hitches in terms of delivery on these things, aside from the supply chain, which everybody acknowledges is real, is really procurement and contracting. And that is what they are used to working with government. So they're assuming that every contract is going to take us four months to work on. And I've assured them all that's not the case. I think they're excited. Most of the firms we've talked. I think that's everything I've got. We have some subcommittees set up to meet tomorrow. If you have shared with me the names of the people and/or who would be going to the WhatsApp folder. I don't know, but it's not necessary that you do it. We're going to put together the brochure and probably should have it for you. Not next year, but it's in the next, the next meeting around that September 5th date. And it's going to be stuff straight off your webpage and the campaign.
You'll be sharing that with the comms committee?
Yeah, I'll send it back to them personally. If they choose to bring it to the full group, that will do that if they want.
And then the financial RFP that we were supposed to review tonight isn't quite ready yet, right?
Yeah, we're picking the software. So, you know, the consultant that we've hired from the get go, right? Was our, is our financial advisor for currently. And so we've asked them to extend their contract to cover helping advising us on that, what financial tool that we will pick. My team has had several demos. We're looking at a number of different products. I think we've narrowed it down to three or four, and it's just a matter of like, looking at it from a point of view of the complexity and ongoing cost of running it, right? So do you need a specialist to manage just the software system or not? Or is there something we can use this that's kind of mostly out of the box? And so that, that is kind of what we're, we're looking at a number of different options. The price ranges, none of them are terrifying. It's all like, but they're, you know, implementation will be something, right? But we have good data on that. Jennifer and Adriana have the data they think that we need to fit in for the initial all work system of accounts and that kind of stuff. So we should be ready to roll once we're ready to pick a vendor. It could be a couple of weeks. Honestly, we're going initially with QuickBooks. So we're starting out with QuickBooks and actually we're going to use that probably as a trial to see if the QuickBooks Pro or whatever it is, QuickBooks, they've, they've gotten like so many different versions. It's not just the free downloadable version from online, but the QuickBooks version that we're looking at, whether or not that would meet our needs. So it's kind of a trial period. We need something to go with right now. And so that's the one that we're implementing. Long term, if we decide to implement another system, I think the timeframe, Jennifer correctly, if I'm wrong, but it's a three to six month implementation, some of these.
So three months and we're pushing it a little bit further into next year so that we can focus on implementing pay velocity first. The other piece of that is we'll be needing to issue a request for proposals for auditors and choose an auditor because I'm told that it'd be good to have one on board now and they can advise us on how to set up accounting so that it's easy for them to come through our information.
Does the auditor work on behalf of the board or?
They will report. So we have, we have a short list of, again, same kind of thing. They either came from the fractional CFO we're using or from other libraries. Most of them came from other libraries. I'm familiar with a couple of them. One of them is the one that City currently uses. So we'll be talking to them in the short, in the coming months about what it would take to get a bid together for them to, if they're interested in it. There won't be anything for them to audit this year, I think.
Easy this year.
You know, that's the life cycle, life cycle of the board will be really like, you're doing the, and for the staff to some extent, like we're doing a budget or we're doing an audit. And that's kind of like that year long process where we live with one for six months and then we live with the other one for six months.
The, do other library districts use QuickBooks?
They're, they're the ones that do. It's used a lot of times in small business. I think we want to test it out, right? So like the question is the same question that we had when we started this, all right? Like, do we want to just replicate all the things that the city has done and all the various, all the processes, any of the processes? Or if we look at a product and we think like this doesn't work for that process, should we be looking at another product or should we be questioning that process? And I want to do, I have a balance of both. So any process that we have that doesn't work with a, you know, a pro version of QuickBooks, I think we shouldn't analyze that process and see if it's necessary really for the district.
Our accountant told us that QuickBooks has limitations that it can't do, that doesn't do well with fund accounting. Doesn't track grants well.
Okay.
Doesn't have exact asset management and doesn't have budget integrated into it. All of those things, yeah. So our outside software and we're really more interested in having all of those features native to the software because we have a team of two people.
Right.
Doing the day to day work and they can't be.
Anyone.
Yeah.
You might look at NetSuite if you haven't already. They're NetSuite, Blackboard.
And Sage and Tab. And we try to get Microsoft Dynamics, but we can't get anybody to call us. So.
I think that's it.
Any subcommittee updates? We're meeting with facilities on Thursday. That'll be nice. If it gets more costs and specificity out of that. Any trustee matters otherwise? Okay.
I do, I did want to bring this up and maybe not, we don't have to, but we should probably, we have public comment. But we should probably put in a procedure for public comment in case we ever do have real public comment. And because it, I think it would be good that we don't do it on the fly, like, you know, we, and like we had one person here and it took 15 minutes of comment. So I think like before we get, if anything, it's ever. What's that?
That's our bylaws. It says we will adopt rules for public.
Yeah. So I think we should adopt those sooner, you know, in case, you know.
Would you like to bring something for?
Yeah, please. I think.
Library commission adopted quite a good one. I'm happy to bring that back to the board and you guys can look at it or you can just invent your own.
Maybe we could look at it on that. Have a bunch of it.
Yeah, I think.
Someone you might look at it from governance.
There's situations we could find ourselves in where.
Once we're discovered.
Well, or, or a group like that wants to talk about books.
Yeah.
Discovers us and wants to come and eat our food and stuff.
Yep.
So. Right.
Okay. Kim, do you have anything for us in your status?
Nothing to add. It's actually reports and then you have the, if you choose to do that tonight.
Okay. So the executive session tonight is for the purpose of reporting back to y'all on the meeting last week with the city and to decide what responses we want to send back to them. So I think an executive session would be in order. Somebody want to move us in?
One thing I forgot, John, finally up the banking. All documents are signed. I will be sending them to the bank tomorrow. I, I'm hoping that that's it, but I am prepared for the fact that they may say like, awesome, now the next few months. She's been doing this, but I don't think so. Got an agreement on everything.
I'm sure they've already invested. I'm going to move that the board enter executive session as allowed by section 2464024 for a conference with the attorney on specific legal matters and to determine matters that are subject to negotiation, blah, blah, blah. Second.
Sylvia second.
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 Seconds, okay. And we're back in business. Sorry, David, I forgot to remind you about that.
No, that's quite all right. I, you know, so this was not hard to do. There's one anomaly that I think you'll see right away, but I'm going to need to slide into the meeting and mute myself. So let's see.
Billy, were you leaving or?
No, she waits to help.
You're waiting, okay.
Wait to close everything down.
Just had like a big box, so.
Yeah.
So the short story is it works out, right? Nothing changes. The presumption that Jennifer and I had for the past seven months prior to you telling me a month ago to factor $13 million and do it over four years was that we were tracking every single expense that we had and we intended to pay the city back day one. So when you changed the model that, we did change the model. And so what is complicated about it now is I can't connect to Connect Molder. What I cannot do in the model currently, but I will figure it out. In spacing out, the model is great, right? Model is awesome. The parts that I am readily figured out with them is we're calculating debt and/or earned income over the course of time. Model is built such to calculate the interest. So it's calculating all those things. It's tabulating in terms of what our current assets are and how those are depreciated. So anytime I plug something in, it does that. So plugging in the debt, then calculated that out. So it's still calculated over a three year period. But we, I blew the bulk of it to the beginning as Jennifer initially done. So we show 11.5 million in the first year and then three payments of, I think, $875,000 to make, to get to 13.5. That's what you told me to do, Johnny. So I.
Yeah, I suggest a little bit just. So that was 11.5 million on January 1st.
We don't have to do it that way, but yeah.
But that's what you, and then what were your other payments?
I think it's 875 in three installments, but it doesn't matter if we pay them in, you know, later in August or in the following year. It doesn't really matter. Jennifer, Jen Yee had asked me the question, is it intended to be from payback from like a year from the date the agreement's done or a year from the date that you guys were signed up or what exactly? And so I didn't know how to.
I think it's from the agreement, right?
From the agreement, from the end of 2023, because we won't have all the numbers until the end of 2023. I mean, I suppose we could start paying back before we know the full number.
Remember that thing we said you hated the part where it has installed updates?
Yeah.
Updates for Zoom.
Isn't that helpful?
Like refresh it now, like every 40 days, 50 days, something. And then zoom, like you have, you have to like.
Yeah, and typically I'm late for a call when I have.
Oh, totally. And I'm usually the one starting the call. So everyone texts me going, where are you?
Yeah, it works. And, you know, again, so this model has some, it is, it is the height of a model that's based on assumptions of equilibrium, right? Like, so we don't know what the revenue is. We still do not know what healthcare costs are. So those two big unknowns are just projections in this model. Those are fairly significant costs. And the revenue, we don't have projections on yet. We're using 12.2%, I believe, as the assumed increase, but that's based off of what the city has been speculating. Got it.
Like we went into the Twilight Zone.
Like we went into the toilet, it says.
Yeah, the Twilight Zone.
Twilight Zone.
So any questions for David about this financial model and the implications of paying back the city in 18 months or within 18 months? So we can let him go and get back.
I'd like to look at, can you minimize, sorry, Jen, we're going to make you smaller, I think.
You for out of my screen, but I couldn't move on that screen. On my screen and mark it on top.
All right, there we go. Show us where, where we're at here.
So again, here's, can you see my cursor? There we are at G4. There is, that, that is the assumption.
Can you go to the lower right and hit the plus?
And hit the plus.
The Biggie text.
PPI doctor.
Oops, not that one. Sorry.
Added a page.
I think it's the, is it the bar?
Yeah.
If this is the bar over on the bottom, just pull the bar over.
Yeah.
There you go. Speaking of Zoom, oh, the others.
Oh, yeah.
So we're not using 12.2, we're using 13 and a half currently for the.
Yeah, it went back. Keep going. Biggie size.
So this number, 5.6 billion is the total value of properties within the district. This number here is the assumption of what we anticipate the increase in that value is over 2023 calculations. Okay, you can see that carries through the model for, you know, for.
Can you say that number? I can't click it.
Though that number is, right now, the assumption is 13.5. So 13.5 is the amount that we're assuming is the increase, although there have been, there is speculation that it could be higher. There is speculation that, man, there's, we haven't, you guys haven't decided, right? Like, so there's possibly you could opt out. There's no increase. Like, there's a lot of things that could happen. There's a possibility that we don't understand the law correctly because the law is ambiguous and it passes. And then suddenly we're actually decreasing the amount of property taxes assessed. But typically when they do those things, I mean, I've been working with a lot of similar ones for the past five or six years. It changes the assessment. So the overall value remains the same. It goes up by whatever, 13 and a half, 20%, whatever it happens to be. And so that $5.6 billion property values that is taxable, there's other, that other couple billion in federal labs and non taxable land that is in the district. But this is the taxable value of all of the properties that are in the district, $5.6 billion. And so we tax at a rate of a property mill levy of three and a half. And that number, the 5.6 billion is based on a 13% increase over what was the, would have been the value in $5 billion would have been in 2022's assessment, 2021, 2022. So that is the assessment, 13% increase turns it into $5.6 billion worth. We're taxing at a rate of 3.5 mils. And so the revenue for the district projected for 2024 is higher than we anticipated. So I know it's at $19 million, but the anticipated revenue for 2024, again, the revenue for 2023 is 17 and a half roughly. Let me get down there. He's still looking at the document in a much smaller font, so there's a lot of ways to go. There you see the initial long term debt because the assumption is that $2 million above the current expenses of 2023, which we have down as, let me see here, I still have to go down there. Revenue in 2023 is 17 and a half million dollars. That's the combined taxable revenue plus gifts and grants. Sales tax off automobiles. And then so 2024, we're projecting right around $20 billion revenue. Expenses this year are roughly $11.5 million plus $1.5 million. That, and so we're looking at roughly 13 plus then additional two that we're adding on for, because these are the expenses to the district. These are the costs that we anticipate paying for consultants or coming groups for the I T transition, broad things. I think that number will be a little bit higher. 11.5 is the estimated cost of the actual direct cost that the city is paying. We're agreeing to also pay back the internal cost allocation, which bumps that number up a couple of million bucks. So that $13 and a half million, we would take that $2 million out in debt. And then you can see with the 2024, with all of those expenses paid, assuming that we've paid 11 and a half million dollars, we wind up in the end with a cash balance, even with that of, I think it's around $4 million bucks. Let's just see. Yeah. So a lot of assumptions in this. We still don't know the cost of healthcare, but healthcare is probably $4.5 million. So.
You already have a budget in there somewhere.
Blank holder for that, right?
Yeah, yeah. We have a, we have a rough estimate using.
But David, to make sure I was following you, this $4 million was based on the 11 point something rather than the 13 point, right?
No, it assumes we pay back $2 million. We have $2 million. We are assuming, yes, the $4 million. We have not paid out all of that in 2024. So we pay out 11 and a half million dollars in 2024 and then a final payment is my understanding, a final payment which would occur it's in the tune of three payments of $875,000 each after that initial payment. So initial payment, whatever date you want to say, March 1. If you needed to lock in a date and they want January 1, that's fine, I think. I haven't gone through to see like the monthly revenue, but typically from the assessor, we would get first payment of revenue from the previous year on or about late March, early April. So it would be best if you could arrange for that initial payment of 11 and a half million on or after March or April. We could then subsequently, I think, let's see what the revenue actually is, what you decide to do with the, what the revenue is for 2024. When we know that number, I'll be a lot more confident to say like, you could just feasibly pay off the rest of it by August of 2024. But not knowing right now, if you can, I would prefer that it works, even with a lower portion, that if you did it over the course of 18 months from January, from whatever that initial date was, March, April, and then made them payments to complete on August, like August of 2025 as the final payment.
What do we give up? That we thought we would get earlier?
Again, so many of the things that we've talked about are not in any way significant net cost, right? So there may be some things that you have to defer, right? This model is still projecting financing, a building in Gunbarrow. And at the end of the year in 2024, we would make a down payment on that building with a 15 year mortgage in Gunbarrow and then pay that off with the financing over the course of time, right? We probably, you know, I think we had initially thought we could probably put down half. It may mean that we put down 20%. Right? Like, so that's, that again frees up money to do things like the entire cost of the outreach program. You know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? To get it all rocking and rolling. Same with the communications plan that we've talked about. So I'm here, like that, that's a cost that we had put into the budget, but we haven't actually built it out. So, you know, that, that assumes a budget, total budget when that build out to around, I don't know, I think it's $350,000, $450,000. So that is in this model, I don't know that that's all that happened. Certainly not going to happen on January 1st. So we can space out some of these things in terms of how they grow. I think there are some things that you're committed to in the ballot language. You have to actually, you're going to want to make movement on Gunbarrow, whether it's just a stated intent or whether you actually do participability or not. Don't know if you will. We want to, we will be putting forward a budget that opens Carnegie right away, that restores hours right away. Like all the things that we think we could do now, if we could just spend some of this money. Those are going to be on your table for like approval in the budget in October, like less than eight weeks from now. And then we are talking with, you know, Paylocity and these other companies. Is there a route that we can go to advertise those positions now in October, November? So that we're ready to hire people and start them on January 1st. So we could feasibly, if we're ready to go by January 1st, we could feasibly bring those staff on, extend the hours, January 2nd when we reopen. If it's a Monday, I don't know what day it is, but Reynolds will be open. Yeah, there's a lot of things that we can do.
We have budget talks.
It's very aggressive. It's, it, what's likely is the first quarter, right? So likely in the first quarter, all of those things that you imagined happening will come up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it works out over the course of time. Obviously, you change the assumptions. I cannot stress to you how important the, this initial dollar amount is, right? There was 17 and a half right now on the revenue.
Looking at a different one.
If it turns out that we're capped here at 10 and it's going to decrease over the course of the next decade, as what kind of maybe is the intent of this bill. You decide to opt in instead of opt out and electively reduce the budget. That has way more impact than paying back any kind of debt. A $13 million debt is not a big deal for us right now. Projecting a percent difference in the increase in revenue changes everything and it changes everything over the course of time. We're in the red. I think even with this model, we're probably currently in the red. I changed it 13 to 5 because in this model with 12.2, we're in the red by year 10, right? So we are in the red. And so the projections obviously are not working out, but we don't know what the revenue is. So I think I moved it to 13.5 to find that new level of equilibrium. It was just like a first shot. We could lower that from 13.5 and probably be at 13 and be okay. But I think it's going to be, it'll be, it'll be an interesting decision once November's over. And you have to be making a decision whether you opt in or opt out of the tax reduction. If that's, if that is how it plays out, because that will significantly impact the capability to do a lot of things. I think you, that, that can't be underestimated. All the other stuff, it's all scalable, right? The outreach program could be $200,000. It could be $400,000. It could be, it could be a home run and we decide to double it within here. I double the budget within here. That's all feasible in the model right now as we're, we're making an assumption around equilibrium and not making real decisions about are we actually going to accept this revenue on taxes?
So can I ask a question about HR before you go? Did you have a chance to verify with the city that there was no problem with going out with applications before January 1st? You're comfortable with that when we talked?
The city attorney said they didn't care, right? And so I'm, I'm, I will get back with Chris Mestrick and Naria to see if they have any issues with that. We would not be using the city's channels. They're not offering them a job with the city, which is where we had always been before. Like we, I wanted to initially, if you remember back today, I wanted to investigate whether or not that was feasible, that we could do some of these things in the course of 2023. And the sense from the city was that, oh, it is not possible. And so this is like, have, have we built out the model with Paylocity? Can we advertise jobs out online and receive input from them, accept applications, review applications, put people in file and do all the kinds of things that you do on our own, beginning. review applications, put people in file and do all the kinds of things that you do on our own, beginning the date you finished, you pass a budget. So the day you pass a budget, we would probably be ready to go with a bunch of job ads that would say like, here's the people that we're interested in. And just see, right? Like, I, I think Jennifer, my staff always hate me when I talk about, you know, we have goals, right? Are you, are you guys going to come back and fire me if we don't hit a goal? I don't think so, right? So the goal is to do it as quickly as possible. I hear that loud and clear. If it happens in the first quarter, I don't think any heads are going to roll, right? I think, you know, the goal is if we say like our goal is second quarter 2024, it could easily be fourth quarter. I know how things work, right? So goal is to do as fast as we can. And if they're going to allow us to advertise positions and accept applications and review and interview clients, candidates, then it's just a matter of like, when are we actually going to be ready?
Yeah. When we talk, there were some certain specific positions you were thinking about, like HR.
Prioritize. Board January 2nd, if I could, that would be a high priority.
Good. Any other questions for David before we let him go and resume our executive sessions? Thank you for coming back, David. I'm sorry, I forgot. Sorry, I didn't.
Realize I was part of a plan this evening. I, it is so speculative right now. I get playing around with these models a lot. It's like, without knowing the revenue, it's almost like, it's just, it's just plain.
Just walks out. There you go. He left.
Okay, I'm going to move that we resume our executive sessions, blah, blah, blah. Was in favor. All right. And now we are back in session. Kelly, can you bring us back up so we can adjourn ourselves? Oh, okay, you're ahead of us. Okay. So is there any other business? Hey, we are returned. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
I think I sneeze on this.
Ouch.
Thanks. Yeah, I have a dinner at Flagstaff House, so.
That's handy. Oh, wow. I've been here forever.
I know, it's. I'll tell you how much I've spent with this law firm.
Was this a wooing?
It's not a wooing one, but this is very, very cheap for them.
Let's let the outside people know.